Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Debbie Cox is absent. Commissioner Art Warren.
Here.
Commissioner Mary Lowery.
Here.
Commissioner Tracy Quick.
Here.
And Commissioner Justin Acevedo is online. Justin, can you hear us? For the record, Justin is muted, but he is online. We do have a quorum, Madam Chair.
Very good. All right, so the first order of business is a consideration to approve the August 14th, 2025 meeting minutes. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? Nope, okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes as writ.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Now, do we have Justin, or are we sure he can hear us?
Justin, can you please answer the commission?
Before we move forward, Justin, can you hear us?
He was there earlier.
Yeah, yeah, he spoke up. Hello? I can imagine him on the other end trying to get stuff to work.
Justin, can you hear us?
He did speak to us earlier before meetings started, correct?
Yeah.
We didn't even make sure that he can vote, though.
Yeah, he's our quorum, so we gotta do it.
It's not on our end, there's nothing I can do about it. If he wants to leave the meeting or join, it's not on our end, it's stopping him from...
I think we have three out of five, though, right?
We do have a quorum with the three city members.
I'll continue to try and reach him.
So you want to just move forward since we have quorum without?
We do have a quorum, yes.
Okay, very good. So then we're gonna move on to item B, presentation and discussion of parking lot paving standards and alternatives and possible initiation of a text amendment. Dana?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Commissioners, pleasure to have this item before you this evening. If you recall, this was agendized, so I think for your October 2nd meeting. Both items on today's, this evening's agenda were listed for that October 2nd, and due to circumstances you're all familiar with, we've continued or moved to this meeting. So, that said, just want to make sure you're aware, yet nothing has changed in that report. I've cleaned it up and updated the dates, things like that. But for the purposes of discussing these, this text amendment, I know you've seen presentations in the past from staff covering this particular topic of paving standards for parking lots in the city. I think back on June 12th, the commission directed staff to prepare text amendment after discussion stemmed from another case before you. On the 30th, staff provided a presentation kind of outlining the various different paving surfaces and locations and purposes and appropriateness of those different types of surfacing materials and so forth. And now, we are bringing you the language that is included, that staff is proposing for, to address this topic in our zoning code. This information was, has been available to public right now in the process. You're simply directing staff this evening and discussing this text. Any changes you might want to see? Questions you have of staff, so forth? And then ultimately, depending on your direction, it would then go into that formal text amendment process where we advertise a citizen review meeting prior to zoning ordinance coming back before you in a public hearing, which is also required. That next step after that citizen review is a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, where you would make a recommendation on that, an ordinance for the text amendment to the city council, who's the ultimate decision authority, or is it ordinances within the city? So, that's the big picture. That said, I just have the text before you, in your packets as well, on the screen here online. So we just took the whole pa, for the most part, the parking, the current parking design standards from our zoning ordinance, which you have in form, and then show red underlined for added text, red struck language for struck text, and kind of reorganizing things. So this is, like I mentioned, already all existing in your code, and then I'll just scroll down. We've got separate parking or driveway standards for single-family and manufactured homes, duplexes, things like that. But commercial uses are where we really get into more detailed engineered type of design standards for surfacing. So, there you see our first inclusion in identifying for new construction, restoration, renovation or restoration of existing parking lots. Perspective applicant shall request a PDM, a preliminary development meeting, that's to bring them in. We sit down and talk, what is their goal? Are they making any changes or what? And then kind of outline that process for them. We do that for every development application, for the most part, single-family on a, any proposed change of use in the city. So that's just one of those kind of first steps. No approvals given through that process, it's strictly informational. So anyway, we want to make sure people are aware to do that. We do not have that process adopted in the zoning code yet, but we will at some point. But we do want to identify that that's requirement. Then surfacing, we get, jump right in. We struck the gross weight of the vehicles, one and a half tons. That's in a lot of different aspects of our code. I think it's a little antiquated to identify this number of axles and things like that. When you're getting into heavy equipment, that's a kind of a different application. But either way, depending on what the proposal is that we would see, the city engineer takes reviews and asks those questions. Maybe a traffic impact analysis, something like that's required, so then we can identify, well, yeah, what type of vehicles? Is this for a construction yard, right? Where they might have a lot of heavy equipment, semi, stuff like that, rock haulers, things like that. So anyway, we just struck that, and I won't spend that much time on any other component of this proposed text amendment. So, that said, hopefully you've all had a chance to look at it. We really get into the meat. On item two, just the one, because this paving is applicable to every commercial property or use and potential redevelopment of a site, we just wanted to make sure that the language is written, to just not be specific to one type of use or something like that, in general. So that's why we've struck the, kind of some of the fundamental, three inches of asphalt over eight-inch aggregate base and so forth, where we have that contained otherwise, and that's ultimately up to the city engineer. We do, we'll touch on that shortly in terms of those specifics. But when we're looking at a variety of different surface types, there's a variety of different applications, right? In engineering and design standards that we, is it in the floodplain, all that fun stuff? So that's something that the city engineer and the design engineer has to take into account when they're looking at resurfacing or creating a new parking lot, designing a new parking lot. So that's it. Item number two, all parking lot services, commercial zone, and you can take a look at that. But we're really identifying trip demand, the track, the, you know, that establishes the use, consistent use, heavy vehicles, things like that, ADA access, water runoff, all those things I just mentioned. So we're just kind of making sure that that's clear in our code, that those are things that engineers, design engineers and our city engineer, look at when, look, when considering applications to repave or pave new parking lots. And then we just kind of really outline that, expand and outline that. I would say item three, pardon issuance of any public works permit construction. Maybe the first couple sentences there probably belong here, but it gets into a lot of application type of information and and disclaimers that are probably more appropriate generally to any civil engineered reviewed plans that we receive. So those standard type of items, we think should probably go into a, into our design standards manual. Create a design standards manual and then have that type of language in there. It's not really a zoning code specific thing that we're getting into detailed application, permit issuance type of language that doesn't necessarily belong here. And that's one of the recommendations you'll see.
Dana?
Yes?
Can we pause and just check in with Justin? Because I feel like I just heard him.
Justin did?
I'll be, I'm here, listen along.
Okay.
And restart it a few times, but I can hear everything after the first minute or so.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
And then just looking at the bottom of that paragraph, registered professional engineer stamped, site grading plan, professional engineer stamped drainage study, all that. That is contained elsewhere, too, in our zoning code. So we want to, you know, we might not necessarily need to explain that. So depending on how the commission wishes to move forward this evening, we'll take that extra look and really start to drill in to what would be appropriate here or appropriate in a engineer, Globe Engineering Standards and Design Manual. That's it. So we just kind of renumbered a few other little inclusions. And then at the very end of the draft language, we, I do identify, so through the process, working with staff, city engineer and public works, you know, a lot, like our presentation, I think previously at the last meeting, kind of outlined, well, these different surfaces, asphalt versus concrete versus, you know, compacted granite versus pavers and, you know, all the various different options. That type of level of detail could go into a design standards manual. And it's like, hey, if you're gonna design any of these, here's some codes, nationally recognized engineering standards that should be looked at and applied. And that's where that kind of specific detail is outlined. Again, you can see it, it's very detailed, so obviously that's in our zoning. That would probably be the single largest section of our zoning code in paving. And then, like I said, it's very engineered based and not as much zoning related. So, that's it. So ultimately, staff recommends, planning and zoning commission obviously have this discussion tonight, and then ultimately, direct staff to move forward preparing the text amendment document for publication and public hearings. At the same time, we'll work with our engineering public works department to develop that City of Globe Engineering Design Standards Manual. And that is common in many other communities, just like a zoning code. Right now, our, our engineering standards are kind of throughout this town, the town code, or the city code, sorry, where grading and drainage is a different section, sanitation and then sanitation and water service is a different section. Well, each of those different components, grading and drainage is a different section as well. It's under the building code section. They all have standard details of how things are, how they cut slope and all these different things. Well, including curbs, ADA apron, stuff like that. Our, for the most part, the city's adopted the MAG uniform roadway standards and details, which Mayor Copa Associates of Governments publishes every couple years, renewed, you know, updated design standards. Well, cities tend to adopt those, and that's what we did. The city adopted that some time ago. So anyway, you pick and things, you modify certain components of that, and that's where we have that contained within a design standards manual, just kind of consolidate all of that engineering criteria in one location. So engineers designing a project, they can go pull the standards manual and say, what is that dumpster detail supposed to be? Or what's the minimum standard that they're gonna accept for the ADA rate apron design and stuff like that? Sorry about all the detailed engineering stuff, but that's the idea, bigger picture. Expand our language in our current code as proposed, and then let's get that design standards manual. So details can live separately in someplace else, engineering public works can enforce. That said, staff's recommending, like I said, the discussion and direction to move forward with the text amendment.
Anybody have any questions, concerns, comments?
I have a question. First of all, thank you for putting this work into it. Really appreciate the research that went into it and the time that went into it. The recommendation that this commission would make, is it to amend the code and to ask the city to include this language in the engineering and design standards manual? Or are we just making a recommendation to amend the code, and then the city is going to independently update the standards?
So you have the draft right now before you that would amend the code. And this is the language. So what you're doing is saying, Steph, yeah, we like that, make these tweaks, and then move forward with the text amendment, and then it comes back to you formally in the public hearing process. But that, you're making a recommendation ultimately to city council on the specific word by word language that's in the zoning, that you would like in the zoning ordinance. Does that make sense?
Yes, but the standards is a different book, right?
Correct.
Wouldn't the code, and I thought, maybe I misunderstood, too. I thought we were kind of simplifying the code to say, rather than detailing all of this in the zoning code now, we're just gonna put little references to this other engineering manual, and then that manual needs to be updated from time to time. Did I misunderstand that?
Correct. So we've got the foundation of what we've found, what our paving surfaces need to address in our zoning ordinance. Now, the detail, depending on what you choose in terms of surfaces and how you design that, that's in a design standards manual, and that's kind of outside of zoning world.
Yes.
In a way, that's, it is a city council adopt the code, but yeah, exactly. That's more founded in contemporary adopted engineering standards. Like I said, MAG is the leader of, this is how you should be doing.
So we're, we would be taking a lot of that detail out of the code and putting references to this other manual in there.
Um, yeah, we didn't have a lot of detail in the beginning. You can see what's being struck here.
It has to be this type of asphalt, like that's coming out of the code now.
That's correct, I'm sorry, yes, correct, exactly. That's specific, three inches of asphalt over eight inches of compacted DG, yeah, exactly. Because as that changes, and it depends on the application, too.
Yeah.
So you shouldn't have that as a basis. It should be up to the, when you see the manual, say, oh, this is their standard. That would be, that is, we mirrored, our current code mirrored acceptable standard, you know, really for most municipalities, that's a certain detail that they use for surfacing. Yeah, we just don't need it to be that specific in the zoning code.
And then, so is this, who is responsible then for maintaining that standards manual?
So city council ultimately adopted MAG standard details that we, our engineers use, our engineering department, public works use. And that's kind of, that, it's in, like I mentioned, other areas of the city code.
Okay.
That aren't the zoning, you're in, planning zoning commissions, responsible, for the most part, the zoning ordinance subdivision code, zoning map, all that zoning related stuff. And it gets into some other little things, because we look at curbs and details on parking lots when we see a site plan.
Okay, good.
That comes before you to approve. So, but yeah, there is a different world that that exists in, and and we can talk about how that goes about, but we wouldn't need to do a formal adoption of, as long as we're not compromising what is clearly adopted by city council as to what our engineering standards are.
And that's what I wanted to be clear on, is we're not just...
If I, if I can just interject there, we have been always using MAG standards, and MAG standards also are evolving depending on, you know, new materials, new construction processes. So, we're trying to keep our code to where we can refer to documents that can be modified and still be, you know, included in our code. And that is why we are proposing to, you know, work on a manual that is gonna try to accommodate all these changes throughout time, but our code is still be referring to, to the panel where things are gonna be updated and it's still are gonna be enforced by our code.
Thank you, yeah, okay. Yeah, my, my main concern was just that we're being clear that it's not like it's gonna be up to the individual engineer that that particular person or business works with to make up the rules as they go. Like this is still a reference to a standard that has to be adopted, and any changes to that have to be approved. So it's still a fair and consistent reference material. That's what I wanted to make sure of.
Right, these are minimum standards.
Yes.
We also need to, sorry to interrupt, no. I want to say that, you know, there is a lot of new materials out there, and they are even better than gravel or gypsum or even asphalt that are being produced. And that's why we want to leave one last chance for, you know, the applicant to submit new proposal, new materials. And, and, and we're just gonna, you know, review them, and if they work, and probably they're more expensive than normal, you know, paving materials, but if that's what they want to do, I can tell you, there are, there are plenty of better processes to, to build a parking lot that will last longer than any of the, you know, materials that we're using right now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Art, do you think?
I do. On the MAG uniform standard, and Dana, you probably explained this very carefully, but I want to make sure I understand it. The MAG standard is subject to revision from time to time. So as that document evolves with, as the engineer just spoke, there are different products, materials, processes that become available, and the MAG standard probably reflects those as appropriate. My question is, does the MAG standard, when it changes, does it automatically change our standard to, to be current with the current MAG standard?
Well, because we use MAG standards, when MAG standards make changes, we adopt them as ours. You know, unless we have issues, we could just, you know, not take it all, or take part of it, or, or none of it. You know, we, we can decide that, but normally, we just go with MAG standards because they're a big agency and they make more research that we're not capable of doing. And when they put out new specs, it's because they have done very thorough research.
So, but specifically when they make changes, and I'm just looking up our standards right now, it just says that our current ordinance, city code in section nine, which is regulating permitting work in public rights of way. They just reference MAG Association of Governments and as amended by the city engineer. So that is assuming whatever the current adopted, whatever the current MAG standards are, that would apply. Unlike, sometimes they would say, like when we do building codes and things like that, and fire code, the 2018 MAG standards, or that's not, it's not a building. the 2018 MAG standards, or that's not, it's not a building. That's an idea.
What happens, what happens is that, uh, our, uh, topography and, you know, the way our roads are laid out, sometimes, uh, we cannot really comply with, uh, MAG standards. It's just because the width of the road is, is not what they are estimating. It's because, uh, you know, the KDA compliance, it's not, uh, you know, something that we can comply with just because, uh, the road is so steep or, you know, different, different reasons why we can, uh, deviate a little bit from next standards. It's not that, uh, we're not complying, but it's because, uh, it doesn't apply to our topography. And, and that's why I always mention that, uh, it is according to global, uh, policies and MAG standards. So that way we can kind of accommodate, uh, you know, something that cannot be fully compliant with MAG. But, uh, you know, we can work with the applicant to where is fair to be built. You know, it's impossible to comply with MAG, MAG, uh, standards. We, we try to do it as, as much as we can, but sometimes we need to deviate because of the reason that I just told you.
Topography, the age, so it's up to Luis to look at that? Okay, what are, you know, how, how best can we show compliance? After he reviews the design engineer's proposal?
No, no, no. It, it just, it is just to clarify, you know, that, uh, we always mention, uh, MAG standards, but, uh, sometimes, uh, it, it, it's just impossible to comply with it.
Art, you have something else?
That answers my question.
That did answer your question? You're satisfied? But then what does kick that in if it's, if the MAG, if the MAG standards are updated? Is that just something that it comes up and you go, it's been updated and we update? I mean, I know we're not gonna be responsible for it, but.
The way I'm seeing this language, yeah, it's just whatever's current. You know, we'll have that manual. It'll probably come down to, uh, when we decide to go through and make it. There's not a heck of a lot, you know? Uh, and the, the fundamentals are there. They haven't changed in decades. But anyway, uh, they, we would have the ability to go back and revisit and evaluate what's working, what's not, or what new, you know, what doesn't MAG address that? We've got this hillside situation that we really need to start to have, you know, more detailed standards to address certain situations. Narrow roadways, things like that that we have.
These would be like on, these would be standards that would be at some association online that they would be pulling from though, right? So as, as we, as we enter into different situations, we would go to those standards and they would automatically pub, be published, uh, by some other entity that's updating them, right? It's just our engineers that are accessing them. But our engineers aren't setting those standards.
Correct. And ultimately we consolidate the most frequent use ones that the guy coming in that wants to do something on his lot, here, take this to your engineer, this is what we use. And they're, that's very customary. Some standard level of detail, right?
Some standard level of standard?
Exactly.
And I'm sorry, I just have one more. I just wanna clarify, so, uh, cause I see two different directions here. So I just wanna make sure that when we're ready to make a recommendation, you're asking for two different directions. One is to direct to finalize and publish the proposed text amendment to our code language. The second is direction to prepare that standards manual, correct? Okay.
Excellent.
Are those two separate motions or, or what is that?
No, oh, no, 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 no. They, they are really tied together because, uh, we don't want to include all those, uh, specific details of, you know, different, uh, surface treatments in our code.
Right, we understand.
So what we do is we tie our code to the manual. So it is, it is, it, it, they're tied, you know, it, 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 they, they work together.
I would say you wouldn't need to direct staff that, again, getting out into that engineering standard. You, um, we have the draft language and with the explanation that we need to have a design standards manual prepared. So I think if you say we like the direction and the language posed here, please move forward with, uh, preparing text.
And that's it?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Awesome. Anybody, Justin, you got anything for us? Oh, did we lose him again?
Sorry, there we go. Just one question. I love this methodology. This is, uh, this is what I am using typically when I'm, I'm working out of town. So most of, most other entities press, they use those design service manuals to help guide us along without having every last thing in code. So I love this, I think it's perfect.
All right.
Makes it much easier and everybody.
Well, that sounds like a, a definitely someone that was ready to make a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would make a motion to improve, uh, as outlined by staff.
Very good, do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Motion approved. Thanks, Justin. Okay, now we are ready to move on to presentation and discussion of the home occupation zoning code and possible initiative of text amendment. Dana?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Sharing same format and very similar prelude there. Like we've discussed this, we've brought a few presentations before you in the past. Did some pure community review and analyzed and, uh, reports for you. Now we've got the summary in the language for a home occupation amendment to our zoning ordinance. If you're all aware, in one of those presentations, the last presentation, we provide the city's current ordinance, which is basically our zoning ordinance, uh, definition for home occupation. I'd be happy to revisit that, um, on your wish, but, uh, obviously it was lacking a bit. It was old, definitely antiquated, probably thirty years old, adopted from the county. Um, and, and didn't really address a lot of the home occupation activities that we see today. So, uh, very limiting, uh, as a zoning administrator, I've had to be very liberal in its application. Just understanding, I've, I've worked in several communities and had to deal with the home occupation. It can be a sensitive thing. Um, so become very familiar with activities, business activities out of homes and stuff like that. And just what you're trying to avoid and what you're, you know, what's very acceptable. So that said, uh, we have that draft before you, which you've also seen. This draft was published, uh, to the public, uh, for public, for comment. And we did receive three responses and that is included in exhibit B in your staff reports. If you wanna take a look at those, a few letters and maybe just a general statement, uh, from one of our, one of your citizens. That said, uh, again, we just have the text shown here. I'll increase the size so everybody can see it. And I'd be happy to kind of go through line by line or just ask you to direct me on whatever topic you'd like to discuss.
Well, as I mentioned before the meeting even started, the only thing that I've ever heard anyone that's, they're concerned about is the daycare. So, and, so I don't wanna see, you know, and I'm reading through this, I'm seeing that there's, you know, the, I'm sure the county health department is involved, the state of Arizona is already involved. And I wanna overburden them with yet more garbage that they gotta go through in order to do something we really seriously need here in the community.
Correct. So again, did peer review, familiar? We do know when we're talking about strictly daycare, and this is not classes and things like that. This is a child daycare, uh, children under twelve. That's regulated by the state, um, DES. Yeah, um, and I'll get to that in a second. What we're, what you'll see, well, DES requirement is basically five or more children, five to ten children in a home requires DES licensing and separate level of approvals and everything. And that, when you look at other communities, um, provisions for childcare, they'll reflect that threshold. A five and up is, you gotta get a use permit possibly? And that's what we're proposing actually here. That's the safest way. And what you can do in that scenario is, uh, so less than five, you're good. We don't even have it as a home occupation in here. We don't even address it. Uh, and that's less than five excluding your own children. So up to four unrelated kids, you being dropped off at your house for whatever period, we're not even, uh, that is a home, that can be a home based business or a home occupation. And they get a business license for, but we don't have any requirements for, for them. But we know more than four children and up to ten, you wanna cap it at ten in a single family home environment? Because that's becomes, that's basically, uh, ten extra trips per day, dropping off kids. If it's only a one cycle versus like a half morning and afternoon sessions or something like that where you got possibly more traffic. So, uh, as you know, that's one thing that we, that home occupations are, are, codes are designed to do is really maintain the character of that residential neighborhood. Limit the amount of traffic because we know commercial uses, business uses can demand more traffic than a single family home. So that's the whole goal is to make it fit within that neighborhood. With the ability to get a use permit for more than five, you can start to look at, and we can implement distance separations and things like that through that use permit process. For instance, like, um, we have a code for group homes, for elderly care, group homes. Very similar. The, the, the state uses very similar language in regulating the number of beds and things like that. Now, obviously it's a very different use, but, uh, how they're treated. But the idea is it's in a neighborhood setting. And how do we protect that neighborhood setting? And they, so statute actually has a twelve hundred foot, uh, minimum distance between different care homes. Because they don't wanna conglomeration on one street because then you'll quickly change the character. There can be detrimental effects to that particular block or neighborhood when there's a concentration of any one type of business activity like that. So, and believe it or not, it has happened where people will start to consume houses in an area for that purpose. We saw it down in America, it became a very popular thing. So giving those separate, so in, through a use permit process for five or more, or five to ten, we can look at distance separations and stuff like that. And then also make sure they're meeting all that criteria. There's, uh, this DES has a, a amount of criteria that they're required to provide. Outdoor space, outdoor activities, things like that, uh, and other security and care, um, criteria. And we're happy to look at that. I would definitely, I'll, I think have that manual available to you with the text amendment. And should this move forward, just so you're aware of what somebody wants to do with daycare of five or more kids, this is what the requirement is. But it's definitely background checks, things like that. So for that reason, in the daycare section five here, uh, uh, the daycare of more than four children. So less than, uh, four or less, you're all good. Four or more than four, but less than ten requires an approved CUP and, uh, proof of licensing from the state. Child daycare of no more than four children under the age of twelve, excluding any dependents of the.
Yeah.
It looks like I might need to fix that language.
May, can I ask him?
Yep, please.
That was one thing I was gonna ask, is that second sentence, if that could be cleaned up? Cause I think what you're trying, intending to say is if you have, you know, no more than four children under the age of twelve excluding dependents, then it's not considered a home occupation.
Allowed by right?
That's all, yeah.
Exactly. But I think allowed by right, or I'll just double check what that should say. But yeah, it's basically saying it's not regulated.
Can I ask another? Go for it. Um, so to Tracy's point about not adding more governmental oversight to, uh, home occupations, are we adding, I mean, apart from the fact that if someone has a daycare, uh, that has between four and, no, I'm sorry, five and ten children, um, that requires a conditional use permit? That's all we're saying. We're not putting any more regulations on that.
Correct.
The rest of that would be up to the regulations that are already set by the state, correct?
Correct. Yeah, you see exactly the extent, uh, what do, oh, yeah, you see the full extent. Unless there's something else in this code that also applies, but no signage, you know, things like that.
Okay.
That applies to all home based businesses.
Okay. So no signage and then like the total trips per day? The math around twenty-four trips per day, which by the way, that twenty-four trips per day is specific to instructional classes, not daycare. So when I go later in the code, and I, I might be missing this, but when I go later, it, um, if I look at part I, so if you go down to part I, that's where it says traffic and parking. It says the home occupation shall not generate more than five additional trips unless otherwise specified. I can tell you that if they even have five student, or if they even have five kids in the daycare, then they're gonna have ten trips in a day, right? Drop off and pick up.
Trip is round.
Okay. But even, even still, I think if we're, if we're stipulating like in part six, instructional classes get twenty-four trips per day, should we increase the, the number of trips that daycare gets? I'm just nervous about daycare being limited by part I that says five trips per day.
Well, we don't even regulate less than four or four or less right now. And it says unless otherwise, okay.
So hypothetically, let's say somebody has a daycare with ten kids. They have the max. And so they have ten kids that are.
Well, they've gotten the use permit at that point. And you've been aware of the trips per day.
Perfect, so.
So the, so the CUP covers the, the number of trips?
Oh, okay. So that's where it's stipulated. So it doesn't matter that this part I says five because the CUP would have a different number for that business.
Exactly, we look at.
Sorry about that. It's like.
Limitations on roads, access. Is it off a collector, all good? Stuff like that.
So they would get the number that they need for the, the business that they have. Perfect.
Most specifically on that.
Okay, good. Then that's not a limiting factor. That's good.
Art, do you have anything?
I'm still a little, little confused and I'm slow, so.
You're in good company, sir.
Humor me. I'm a little nervous about this because traffic in a neighborhood can be a very sensitive issue. And I, I just wanna make sure that even if, uh, you had a limit of four, with extenuating circum- circumstances, the traffic can still be more than eight round trips a day. Four round trips. And depending on the location of the home and the, uh, whether it's a one-way street, you named some of the variables. So I don't need to rename them, that it can be, um, a sensitive issue to neighbors. So I just wanna make sure that we've, I understand if we go above four, five and on, we're in a cup, right? Situation, but even four can be.
Yeah, but we're not regulating four, so that would be to cut, that would be the neighborhood having to complain about it? And maybe bringing it to attention, but if we're not regulating it, that would be none of their business with how much traffic there is?
Um, yeah, so if we're not, you're not, are you referencing home?
Daycare, broom.
Daycare, yeah. Yeah, I pause, maybe I didn't.
Cause I'm gonna say with the CUP, the neighbors are gonna have the opportunity to come and speak out against it if they don't want it in their neighborhood.
Traffic reviews it and looks at the intersections, the number of incidents at intersections serving that particular neighborhood. You know, that, you gotta take all that into account.
And my understanding of some of the existing ones is they, they all, they're in a neighborhood that supports them. So I mean, we're, we're, right now, we're, I don't, I don't even know if there's new people trying to do daycare, but the ones that are existing are in neighborhoods where the people support them because we need them so bad.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so I, I'm very comfortable. So right now, you know, the average trips per day for a single family is eight to ten, single family home. So with those four additional, it should be normal. When, like in the instructional classes, we'll allow, you know, we recognize, okay, they could be doing yoga or something like that and having people come and go. Uh, so twenty trips per day. Oh, felt, we saw that, I think, in other city situations, um, would be appropriate to allow that with these separational things. So now we know three houses in a row aren't gonna have classes or something like that where now that one intersection to get back to that house way back there, uh, you know, isn't receiving some astronomical increase in traffic or something like that. So I think there's, there's measures in place for number six, instructional classes, um, not exceeding five students, but, um, But two, to look at that. It can't, for the most part, for the margins, obviously, we can't regulate daily who's accessing what house and stuff like that. Usually if it's something that's brought to our attention, it's because it's a problem, and it's something we can measure.
So, so there are some guardrails that we can, that the homeowners can use to assail any. What they consider a deviation to that.
Right, like I said, we'll, once we get, and I've had to get involved in that in the past, if there's complaints of too much traffic, then we monitor it. You know, let's see what, you know, what, what the traffic situation is on a regular basis. Like I said, if it's the level of being complained about, you, it's pretty evident usually by the time we start rock, keeping an eye on it and investigating.
Okay, that answers my question.
Mary, you said you had one more?
Yeah, I have two more.
Two more, okay.
Sorry, so number one. I wanna go over to, you know, we've, in part B, it listed, it lists permitted uses and it lists a bunch of different types of businesses that people could use as home occupations. Part C goes into prohibited. What if a type of occupation that comes up later on is on neither list? How will that be handled? I'm not for trying to put everything in one or two, one of these lists. What I would recommend is that we have some sort of language in here that covers the process for how we would handle a new business that comes about that's not already listed. Does that make sense?
It does. So in the, each section, well, overall in the zoning ordinance, it's zoning administrator shall consider, uh, there's language. Standard language in the code. I think it's, it's also included in our permitted uses sections in each zoning district that we have our list of allowed uses. And it says similar to, and that's up to the zoning administrator to look at it and make a determination, is this similar to any of these type of uses? Yeah, so I go through that process when I look at these codes or develop this. And I just ask, let's talk about, throw one out, is the only really way to do it. But if you have a thought or an example, other than that, I'm pretty comfortable, we've got the margins here and then most everything falls within it.
Then the only suggestion I would make is since you have that clause in, in part B for permitted uses. I see it there in part B ten where it says similar uses to above. You need some sort of clause in part C. And my only argument against saying similar is somebody could come up with something totally different that eat, that we either want in this town or don't want in this town. Let's say somebody comes up with, you know, I mean, there's all sorts of things out there that people may or may not want going on in their neighborhood. And if it's not similar or dissimilar to things in this list, now we're in a sticky situation. So I would just open up that language under both lists, does that make sense? The second thing has to do with part D where it says maximum floor area allowed. A home occupation shall not occupy more than one quarter of the total floor area in the principal building. Is that from an industry best practice or a standard? What is that from?
That is, it'd be hard for us to find a home occupation municipal code that doesn't have a, that area.
Okay, a one-quarter.
And I think that's, what are we, I think that's more liberal than what our current ordinance says as well. But yeah, quarters are very typical.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Cool. Justin, do you have anything to add?
Uh, let's see, so going down into the, the additional notes that you outlined down below that are, I think, are just based off of the two emails that you attached as well. There's a few things in there that I was gonna go back and forth on and maybe just figure we, we should probably just address as we're all together for a few moments. There's a number of things like animal care, health and wellness, creative services. Most of those, it's, it's not, I feel like they already kind of fit into most of those categories of, of, correct?
That's how I see it.
Cause animal care, I figured that falls under something under probably instructional classes. And almost a daycare, I think that was the only one that I was maybe a little concerned on because I had pickup, drop-off type of elements to it.
Yeah, like dog rooms.
Exactly. Kenneling, overnight kenneling, you know, my experience, that's all, for some reason, the veterinary, even in commercial uses, that it sometimes requires a use permit. Just because I think historically kenneling has been, you said, bothered neighbors apparently.
Can be noisy.
Yes. Dog walking, you can go walk through people's dogs, right? Usually, they wouldn't just be walking a dog, that's staying at their house. Well, you can have a dog stay at your house and walk it. If you're.
Right, and then, yeah, so, so I think those are all good. I just wanna check and kind of make sure as I was rolling through all those, that you felt those were covered in those categories already. I think the only other one that I saw was in the notes, but I'm not seeing it as a issue currently in what you're, we had outlined here. Is the discussion of using accessory structures. We allow that, it appears in this current draft text amendment. The only one that I understand here might be something we might wanna look at is the use of some of the outdoor spaces such as landscaping, gardening, and backyard nurseries type of elements. Which almost feels like it should be tagged in this part of the food handling or somewhere in there, or maybe it's its own thing. But that one is overly unique, as we do say, within the confines of the, the principal building, accessory structures. I, I think, I think I know at least two that exist in town already that are probably just doing their own thing, or hobby, but. Is that something we should be addressing as well?
So the area, obviously, it's a lot, also, best practices, it's a hard, it'll be hard for us to find a community that allows outdoor home occupations. That's where you get into trouble. What are you doing outside that's not gonna annoy your neighbor as a business, you know, eight to five or whatever? So that's why you'll always see that, like, it needs to be confined. So that said, obviously hobbies are hobbies. If you're, you got a nursery and you've got up to five people showing up at your house to buy a plant or something like that, I don't think we'd ever. I don't think that would come across our desk.
Yeah.
But the consequence, we allow it, you could potentially have some serious.
You could actually have that real fast.
Uh, yeah, 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 trips per day to a residence and, and it's gonna be hard to turn that off.
And then this one has nothing to do with our current text amendment, I just, it jogged my brain and I couldn't find anything on it. So I figured I'd put it in front of you, is do we have anything in our code on beekeeping currently? I know most municipalities do, and it was brought, that's been one of those emails.
I know, yes, you don't want those on less than an acre. I don't, I'll have to take a look, yeah, that's, and that's very common. I sense the county animal control probably has a regulation, I'll look into that for you.
Okay, yeah, not something I wanted to have in here, I just figured that's something, if we're going through text amendments, we might as well look at that one too. No, but I, I think everything else on here makes sense to me, thank you for your time, that's a nice question.
Thanks, Justin. I want, one comment on the, the very last of the letters, the collection of equitable taxation, is this hurts our commercial districts and diminishes the tax base. Do, like, the, does a daycare, do they pay PPP taxes? Like, if it's a daycare that's.
I don't know what this, I don't know, uh, what the tax.
Maybe not that they're competing with anybody, so that's maybe not a good example, but.
Uh, it's income, but I don't know how that's taxed, and I sense that it might not be taxed, but.
I'm just curious. All right, if there, if no one has anything else, we have someone that would like to get up and say their piece, Sylvia Kaiser?
Hello, thank you for listening to me, I was just a little confused on your ratios. I am a DS daycare provider and I've been licensed since nineteen ninety-five. My license.
I'm sorry, I just wanna go back, I just wanna go back to the tax, taxes.
Who, who's speaking, they need to pause.
Retailing business, then, you know, you have Louis' P T, uh, number.
Can you mute him?
You pay taxes depending on.
Sorry. It's okay, thank you. I'm used to it. I can interrupt it all day. Like I said, I've been licensed since nineteen ninety-five. My license allows me to have six children, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. You mentioned five.
I just wanted, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the taxes.
Lu- Louis.
When you, when you. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Hang on, we've moved on, Louis.
Could you please wait? Nope. Esperate, Louis. Be good. And you did mention a different ratio than what my license holds. And you also mentioned the times that children or parents are allowed to drop off and pick up. Now, right now, since I do hold my twenty-four-seven and if you, like you mentioned, childcare is very much needed as well as preschool in our area. So I have two preschool classes, an AM and a PM class. Currently have eleven children. How does that affect me? And if I choose to get evening kids, I can do that, and if I choose to get graveyard kids, I can do that according to my license. I have done that in the past and I'm not doing that currently. But I can, if I were to get a call from CPS or DS, there's only three DS childcare providers in our area. And as you mentioned, it's, it's needed. With what you're proposing, are other providers gonna be mandated to get a license of some toy, of some type, or?
If state requires it. And, and now, you've brought up two things, is it daycare or is it?
Just both.
Classes, you have both.
Well, see, I'm a childcare provider, but I'm also an educator, so my children and my care are not gonna sit there and watch TV.
Right.
I'm gonna teach them, and so even though they come to me as childcare, they're getting preschool for free.
If you, um, so it sounds like you're probably grandfathered right now, because you've been operating, you have a business license with the city?
Uh, with the state.
Not with the city? Okay, so you'd have to outline that. We're doing education and providing classes as well, you know, that's two things.
Okay, so what if I, what if I just said, I'm just providing childcare and these are the crafts that I do every day?
Right, and if that childcare, exactly, what do we know?
You know, I mean.
It's the, it's the heads in, you know, butts in seats or the heads in, in your location is the item. So if item number five.
So, and so you have six?
This language.
In my first class, I have six, in my second class, I have five.
Five, okay.
I don't have any graveyard or evening kids at the moment, but I can take them according to my license if I choose to.
Got it.
I'm old and I'm tired.
And they're all under twelve?
Yeah, they're all under twelve, but my license also will allow me to build the state of Arizona up until a child is thirteen. And the food program also allows me to get reimbursed for a child up until their thirteenth birthday.
Got it, got it, got it. Well, and this is only trying to address, I think the DES language is addressing childcare in a home up to the age of twelve. So I don't know if they classify thirteen and up differently, I, our code's not specifying that. I would say you've already got your like DES license, I would suggest you get a, a city business license at your earliest convenience. And the fact that you've been operating should just continue as grandfathered until you make a change or something like that. You would need to make sure you're in compliance with whatever code gets adopted.
Okay, so.
As of now, the home occupation code wouldn't allow you to, our current code doesn't allow what you're doing.
And how are you mandating other providers in the area that haven't gotten any type of license to be mandated like I'm gonna be licensed?
Wait for people to turn them in, or they come in on their own and, and, and apply for a business license.
So the person like me who's doing everything by the book is gonna be mandated, but everybody else that isn't will not be.
Not anybody that comes and asks us for a business license to operate an activity out of their home.
Okay.
We'll get the same code, applies to everybody.
So.
You're just saying, you know, if somebody wants to not tell us something, obviously, that's not uncommon.
So if I'm doing childcare, I don't have to file for that, but if I'm educating children in my care under my childcare license, I have to file for that?
Uh, if you're, if you're taking care of more than five children, like I said, I'm thinking you're grandfathered, we'd have to look into details. You've got your DES license, you're, you've got childcare of six kids and you're doing your thing. Uh, once you change that and want to increase or something like that, we would say you need to come in and get that use permit. We look at the trips per day, all of these details that you're discussing, where the property is, its access. And to make sure that there's not gonna be a traffic impact to, to the surrounding area. And it's a hearing, it's a process, planning and zoning commission actually is the decision authority on use permits.
Okay.
So that's where that would go.
See, and right now, if I wanted to have more than six children or children or above the five, my ratio would be, I think it would be one to ten or two to ten. But I'd have to go with the group home license through DS or DHS. But what, the part that I'm still confused on is the limited times of day per my house that parents can go to.
We don't have any times explained in this, I don't believe.
Yeah, I don't see any times.
We don't have any.
I saw something about five limited times or.
Trips per day.
Trips per day, so if I have different parents coming throughout my day, according to my license, I can have eighteen kids during the day. Morning, AM, PM, as long as I don't go over my six, four for comp.
So just be aware, trips per day is one of our critical things that we look at to make sure we're not disrupting the neighborhood or causing an unsafe traffic situation in the neighborhood.
Right, and I, and, and none of my parents block, I live in a cul-de-sac, nobody ever blocks anybody's driveways, everybody can come and go.
Well, I think it would come down to your neighbors complaining about it, so if you're in a neighborhood that that's not happening. So you're, it wouldn't seem to me like a, you know, unless some cross-the-old person moves into a house, all of a sudden it, that, and starts to come and complain. I can't imagine anyone giving you any grief over it. And you've been doing it since ninety-five in the same place?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say you're probably driving the same.
Two thousand, but I mean, I, I try to be as legit as I could be. I mean, I've, I've gotten my education, I'm with First Things First, I'm rated a five-star program since two thousand twelve, I'm nationally accredited. Like I said, I've, I've held my DS license since nineteen ninety-five. I'm here for the children in our community and to teach children, not only just to be a good childcare provider, but also to send them off to kindergarten ready. And, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't know how that would differentiate me having to get something else other than my license for childcare if I wanna teach those children in my care.
So we're trying to take the lightest, most delicate touch possible, I think, in this scenario. So I think if you're, like I mentioned, you've been operating. I would get a business license though with the, with the city. Because that's where we look at, it's legal non-conforming use, they've been doing it for X amount of time. Now, we don't, we can look into the details, but as of now, I don't see any reason why, if this ordinance is adopted, you need to change what you're doing.
And I'm, and I, and I'm the problem with.
You're legal non-conforming, but, you know, we can always look deeper. But if you can operate within this confine, if you do change or decide to increase more than six, then we would ask for a use permit.
I've, I've been asked to go group home and I'm like, no.
They showered me that clear.
And a group home, it's separate in our section, you can look at it, it mirrors the statute.
Yeah, I, I, DS has been wanting to go group home since I started and no.
For kids, okay, so, uh, that's a different world.
Because it's so needed and, and I'm great at what I do.
This is when you start to get into, and our code separates out if it's for our group homes. I thought it was for the elderly, the way the DES writes that, but anyway.
It's for childcare too, you just need another body, another body so that you can have more.
They have other regulations.
Yeah, and, and they do limit, I mean, I don't have babies in my childcare.
They don't stay the night either.
Excuse me?
Group homes are typically for where people reside.
It depends, it depends on what you wanna work. And so a typical group home would probably go nine to five. I've always held a twenty-four-seven license because, you know, not everybody works nine to five. And so just until recent, I quit doing the graveyard only because the mother lost her childcare.
If you could shoot me an email though, I'd be happy to dig into that, the, the group home and learn more about that too.
Yeah, yeah, I just felt like I don't wanna be breaking anybody's rules since I am a rule follower and I try to get into as many programs. That are gonna benefit my families and my children. Um, and so, yeah, it's a lot of work, all the organizations that I'm in, they're all a lot of work, but if it's for our community and our children, then I'm gonna plug into them. And so when I start hearing, you can only have so many kids coming to your house, I get kind of scared, cause I don't wanna have to. Lose any of my families and anything that I provide for them.
So, yeah, please reach out, so the process is, this will, this text will then be written and published in a newspaper. And advertised for a citizen review meeting, and I'd love to have more conversation on that with you prior to all that going, going on.
And as far as paying taxes, I pay a lot of taxes. Pay a lot of them. Nothing's free.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, we have Alexandria White.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, I also provide childcare. I am a private childcare provider who's been doing childcare since like two thousand twelve. So the way that my business operates is I have full-time kids throughout the day. Towards the end of the day, there is a transition period where kids get off the bus, their parents can't pick them up right away. So I act as liaison in between for those children. But what I'm hearing is, is now if I do that, I'll be in violation of the code as it's written. Which isn't really fair to those parents who have no way of being home for their children until after five o'clock. Or five-thirty or six, like I still have one of my daycare kids with me right now, you know? And so that part, I'm a little unclear or nervous about.
Well, I'm not sure the bus dropping them off, what you even count is, is, is traffic, I mean.
I'm more worried about the ratio portion of it, because I choose to stay, um, an in-home provider, which. I still want to stay an in-home provider. Um, I don't want a license through the state only because, um, my husband worked in law enforcement. Through the Drug and Task, uh, Violence Task, Task Force. So there will be some families who do call me, who I have to respectfully decline. If I'm sanctioned through the state, I cannot respectfully decline. I have to consider them just as I would consider everyone else, which is an implication to me, my home and my family. So that's why I've chosen for the last thirteen years to do it the way that I do it. Um, and as far as, uh, neighborhoods and, you know, the traffic in your area. I mean, we're two, uh, there's one house in between hers and mine, but we live in a giant cul-de-sac, right? So she does what she does, I do what I do, but our traffic never impedes anyone's driveway. It never gets in anyone's way at all whatsoever. Um, and so I'm curious, in the event that it were to exceed that amount, would we be able to. Ask our neighbors in good faith to write a letter to the city stating they don't have a problem with our pickup and drop-off? So that if we ever go over the provided, um, in and out of our driveway, it won't become an issue.
Chair.
Yes.
So two points there, real quick, the ratio part, we don't have a ratio, like people, uh, I think that's a D S requirement?
Well, you're kind of setting a ratio when you say four or below, so that's a ratio.
Yeah, exactly, and that, that's because that's the, that mirrors the D S requirements. And it sounds like they, the S says, hey, if you're taking care of five to ten children in your home, unreal, you know, not your children. In addition to your children, then you need to go through this licensing process, and that's not us.
Right, so I would be four or less, which is why I'm asking you, because I think I would fall under you, because I don't fall through D S.
If you came for, if this was adopted, you came in and asked for a business license to have five kids. Under your care during the day, we would say you would have to get a use permit. And apply for a conditional use permit, which will require that you also get D S license, cause we can't ignore the state's requirements for.
And in the event that I have four or less, I will still, uh, need to hold a city business license as well?
Uh, we're not addressing that, we're just talking about four or more, it's, uh, I'll leave that to, uh, Tony's, the, uh, business license guru. Um, but I'll leave that up to our business license group.
It seems to me what I'm reading is four or less, you, it's.
Right, I just, I just wanna clarify before, cause I don't wanna come in here feeling a certain way and it be completely misaligned, you know what I mean? Um, as far as taxes go, I've had my transaction privilege tax since the first day I started. I pay taxes yearly, plus my income tax that I claim as a Schedule C business, so. I know a lot of businesses don't do that, um, but tho- so for those of us that do. I'm not understanding if I'm four or less and I still do that, if the business license would still apply to me. Or in lieu of the business license, the fact that I do pay, you know, my taxes for county, state, whatever it may be. Are those interchangeable, or will they be mandated together?
So we're getting way outside of, I think, you know, taxes and licensing, I'd be happy to speak with you off, offline and then put you in touch with our.
My apologies, they mentioned it and he spoke on it, so I thought it was table.
Questions, but I know you won't customarily see that in a zoning ordinance.
Correct, yeah, good questions.
Yes, great question, let's touch base as we develop this and make sure you get the information.
Um, and I just had one other question, you had said that the actual parking and timeframe doesn't apply. But I read both of the suggested, um, documents from the prior conversation you had as well. And it did state on there that it was residential as well for deliveries and drop-offs and pickups, so do we fall under. A residential drop-off and pickup that's limited to a certain time to ten P M.? Or do we not fall under that, even though the way it's written, it comes off that way?
No time restrictions in the code, uh, with when your five trips per day outside of your typical family?
No, I'm saying the prior code that you discussed, where you were talking about deliveries and drop-offs and stuff like that, it. Stated in there, and I read it line by line, but one of the things it stated was for residential drop-offs, we're residential. We're getting things dropped off, you know, kids all the time, and it said between the business hours of, I think, six A M. to ten P M. So my question is, as we're operating a business, are we also gonna fall under the residential guideline for ten P M.?
This is all the guideline we're talking about today, and I don't see that language in here, we can, when we chat offline, you can tell me where, if you saw a prior presentation or something like that.
No, 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 you spoke about it earlier in the same meeting.
Okay, did I have timeframes? So, no, this is the text, I don't see anything specifying times.
Like I think you mentioned UPS and FedEx and stuff like that.
We're not gonna put limitations on times.
Traffic and parking.
Right, parking for residential, but does that incorporate our?
Uh, all of this is residential.
Right.
If you're not, yeah, you wouldn't need this if you're not in residential, might be a commercial use or something like that.
So then the ten P M. won't apply to that?
Correct, there's no ten P, I, no, I think you might be talking about noise maybe in a, like a different city code?
It said parking, it was in the city code, but it talked about parking.
It's in one of the letters that was written and sent in.
Oh.
Oh, it's a suggestion.
It was somebody's recommendation.
Oh, okay, so at this time then.
Yeah, well, sorry about that, yes, we received comment from the public and I kind of itemized, summarized and itemized what.
Oh, here it is, reasonable business hours from six to ten, but yeah, that's, that's a suggestion from a member of the public, it's not the code. The code has no time constraints or even anything about times in it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
For that confusion.
No, that's fine, and then I appreciate your time, that's all I had to ask, thank you.
Did we wanna circle back to Louise, or do we wanna not talk about taxes?
No, we did not, no, I just brought that up because of, uh, I was curious because of this last, the third letter, that was it. And no, we don't need to circle back to Louise on that, at least I don't think so. All right, do we have anything else?
I have a question about number of trips, so if in part B permitted uses, number six, instructional classes. If we're willing to stipulate twenty-four total daily trips for that use only. Why can't we just make that the generic maximum for all uses?
Uh, it's just incredibly intense, you don't have a lot of people doing classes like that, I think you'll be, it'll be unlikely to have somebody to have that many trips per day. Doing yoga classes or whatever classes they might be doing, um. But if you have. Food handling, processing, packaging, twenty trips per day, that's gonna be a lot of little trucks or something going up to a house and, uh, clearly. So, I, I see that as a creep.
You got ten kids, you got, and, and we're talking round trip.
But you get to control that by use permit.
I know, but then, why wouldn't we, I guess I'm, I don't know why we're putting, like, these guys, like, why does this one get twenty-four? And all the others get five, that's what I'm trying to understand.
So let's talk about those, businesses such as plumbers, electricians, contractors, that's strictly a home occupation, uh, home office, they're not. People aren't bringing their plumbing, they're not allowed to bring their plumbing, their electrical and their things like that to the residence to drop off to get fixed.
Yeah.
So, you say they're allowed to do twenty of those, I think they're gonna assume they're allowed to have people drop off their, their stuff. Uh, that class, a class is where you have the, the interaction with the public and the trips. That's the only, besides childcare, that's the only, those are the only two uses, home, home-based businesses. Or home occupations that allow somebody to show up at your house to get, for you to serve.
And I'm looking at, it also, it, it limits it to five students at one time, so it wouldn't be like all twenty-four, you, you wouldn't have all twenty-four people show up all at once.
There you go.
All right, so.
Cause you don't have the parking for that.
Right, yeah, that's what I was thinking, then where the heck would you put twenty-four?
We don't want you to have the parking for that, cause now you just lost your yard and.
Yeah.
You changed the character.
So it limits the twenty-four by limiting how many people you can have per class.
That's fine, I just, I was curious, like, why put, why have twenty-four, like, why does that one get twenty-four? It seems like that wouldn't even, why would you even have twenty-four in there then, does that make sense?
Say twenty-four or twenty?
Six, it's twenty-four.
Twenty-four to, total do, I'm just, I'm wondering why that one gets such.
Five at, five at a time, but you can have up to twenty-four, so that doesn't even, the math.
To me, the clause about twenty-four should just come out. It's, it says, in no event shall an instructional class generate more than twenty-four total daily trips to the residence. Why would, if, if we say that that's a max for that use, why wouldn't we say that's a max for all uses? I just don't know why that's being tagged to that use, that's all.
Oh, big. Go ahead. No, please.
Oh, I was thinking, would we potentially remove that twenty-four trips on the instructional classes? Um, and then we go down into our traffic. Uh, and parking and I, where it says, shall I generate more than five additional trips? Apparently the language you added in there was unless specified in this code, would we say unless. Specified within the pre-conditional use permit?
There's no use permit for the instructional classes, that this is, that's, that's, this is a carve-out of. If you removed a number, what's it say, they've got five half-hour event, uh, classes of people of five all day. And that, you, you can't take that back. You'll have to rely on your P D. for public safety enforcement, though we permitted them to do it. We don't have a stopgap at that point.
With what we have listed here, their permitted uses, if somebody wanted to, like, a professional office. If they wanted to have additional trips per day, we could, they would come in and they would submit for a conditional use permit for additional trips. Parking, et cetera, whatever I mean, correct?
I'm sorry, one more time.
So, let's say, just looking at number one, the, the kind of most blanket term, the professional offices, remote, online telephonic service, whatever that might be. So, let's say they needed to have more than five trips per day. They could potentially come in and submit for a conditional use permit that would allow for additional trips, correct?
No, that's strictly daycare as the use permit, no. And with that mentality, yeah, then, anyway, the, one way to address that is say, yeah, if you want more than. Any of these, uh, any of the maximum, or the maximum standards allowed, you can. Appeal to this, you know, or apply for a conditional use permit to allow you this, and I just don't, you don't see that, that.
Yeah, I agree, okay.
Most uses don't, home occupations, people really don't have a lot of people there. Where you would really be concerned is sales, and you're not allowed to sell stuff, any code you'll see will allow you to sell to customers. On-site, our current code doesn't, um, that's, that's where you get the trips. Other than that, you know, delivery trucks usually don't, you know, they don't deliver that often. So you don't really see that much of an impact from a traffic-wise situation, except for when people need to go to the location. For the service, and that's classes. Uh, beauticians can do hair, but they're not gonna have five seats, they can't do, they can't have more employees, so. That's inherently controlled by how much they can achieve in a day, you know, patrons that they can. And I haven't been aware of any issues coming from that type of use.
I think that's enough for me, I'll take that up to you guys.
I'm good.
I'm good. Art, you're good?
I'm good.
Do I have a motion for us to move forward on this?
I'll make a motion to, uh, adopt the recommendations by staff, including additional modifications. To section E five. That's my motion.
Are we motioning to adopt, or it says publish and propose?
Finish, yeah, to accept and move forward with the.
So that motion was solid? Great, second.
What did you say to adopt?
I've got a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes for us to move forward with it. All right, Shelley, do we have in, I know we have future agenda items, so have we set our meeting dates?
Yes, uh, our next, uh, meeting is December third.
Did the meeting invite already go out for that?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, we did.
Let's see, a legal ad and today's paper? Yes. P A. D. resume. And then, um.
Six as well.
I think we'll probably schedule a few other things on that agenda, I don't have any development applications, but maybe text related things. You know, it's tough with the holiday right before, but we're getting crunched, uh, but you will have another zoning case. In probably July, uh, January.
Very good, all right, anybody has, have anything else to add? The motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.